Board of Health meeting to order first. So, remind you to turn your cellphones to silent or vibrate. And then let's all please stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I would, before I ask Amanda to take the role, I would mention that Councilman Dalby is home with the flu, and Councilman Rowe is traveling. So, we're a little thin tonight, but they both have good reasons why it can't be yours. So, take the role, please.
Councilmember Strebe.
Here.
Councilmember Berg.
Here.
Councilmember Dalby. Councilmember Rowe. Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Mayor Lozio.
Here.
Approve the minutes for meeting number four on February 20th, and meeting number five on February 27th, 2018, is presented. Recommendation: Approve the minutes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Berg.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Rescind the November 21st, 2017. The agenda is a typo. Condemnation of 1346 North Elm Street. Recommendation: Rescind the November 21st, 2017, condemnation of 1346 North Elm Street.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Holly. We have with us Jody Gates. Jody, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you'll recall, this property was previously condemned by the Board of Health. And after the condemnation, the owner, Chinsia Roberts, offered the property to the city because she was not going to be able to demolish it. The city then offered this property for sale, and we received some bids. And the successful bidder intends to rehabilitate the property, not demolish it. Therefore, the condemnation action needs to be rescinded.
Any questions for Jody? Hearing none. Take the role.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Berg.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set to consider condemnation of the structures on the lot located at 328 South Ward. I receive no objections on this item.
Jody, you have the floor.
This property at 328 South Ward was placarded April 12th, 2017, due to dilapidation of the exterior of the house. And as you can see, the property's in pretty bad condition. The Health Department sent a notice to remove the tree that had fallen over in the yard, and to repair the exterior deficiencies in 2016. And the tree was removed and cut up in the yard, but the remaining exterior issues were never addressed. And after that, the house was placarded. The owner submitted a repair plan, but has not been able to make those repairs. And therefore, staff is recommending condemnation.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that wants to address this item, now's the time to step forward. Seeing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Berg.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Condemn the structures located at 328 South Ward. Order demolition, removal, and leveling of the lot, and direct all costs attended to such actions, including administrative costs, to be assessed against the property and/or collected from the owner or owners thereof. Recommendation: Approve the condemnation of the structures located at 328 South Ward.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions for Jody? Hearing none. Take the role.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Berg.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Is there any other business for the Board of Health? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Health.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Berg.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll move right into the regular City Council meeting. And so again, Amanda will need to take the role.
Councilmember Berg.
Here.
Councilmember Dalby. Councilmember Rowe. Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember Strebe.
Here.
Mayor Lozio.
Here.
Items on the consent agenda. Minutes for meeting number eight on February 20th, and special meeting number nine on February 27th, 2018, is presented. Appointment of Brandon Kelly to the position of equipment operator, sewer maintenance department, effective on or about March 19th, 2018. Appointment of Henry Hank Harper to the position of utility worker, street maintenance department, effective March 19th, 2018. Civil Service Commission police officer entrance eligibility list of March 5th, 2018. Civil Service Commission firefighter entrance eligibility list of March 5th, 2018. Purchase of a John Deere mower for the Parks Department from Sinclair Tractor in Atumwa, amount of $26,250. Resolution number 54, 2018, accepting the work as final and complete, and approving final pay request for the water pollution control facility headworks PLC upgrade project. Resolution number 68, 2018, fixing date for a public hearing on the proposal to enter into a development agreement with 312 East Alta Vista Partnership, and providing for publication of notice thereof. Beer and/or liquor applications for Hy-Vee Gas, 1027 North Quincy. Saints Pub, 2513 North Gate, without their service area. Walgreens number 1301, 327 West Fourth. All applications pending final inspections.
Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, take the role.
Councilmember Berg.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Item C, we need approval for tonight's agenda, so can I have a motion, please?
Move to approve tonight's agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Skip. Okay, take the role.
Councilmember Berg.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Item D, we have reports from city officers, boards, commissions, and committees. So I'm going to, first one on the agenda is the Fire Department badge pinning. I'm going to call on Chief Tony Miller to come to the microphone. Good evening, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmembers. We're here tonight because we had an Assistant Chief recently retire. When an Assistant Chief retires, we have to replace him. We have to replace a captain and a master firefighter. So we're going to do that tonight. The first one I'm going to call up is Rod Long. Rod is a, he's an eight-year veteran of the Fire Department. He's been to the hazmat, the National Hazmat deal in Anniston, Alabama. And he's taken numerous leadership classes, numerous officer classes. When we do a badge pinning, I tell the guys, whoever's meant something in your life, whoever you want to be the pinner, you pick whoever you want. Rod has picked his son Keaton to be, to pin his badge on.
Very good.
He's been a 17-year veteran of the Fire Department. He's went to the National Fire Academy once. He's went to the security and emergency response center once. And Bill's taken, he's like Rod, he's taken a lot of leadership classes, a lot of officer classes. And we're pretty fortunate tonight. Bill's going to have the Assistant Chief that retired recently, Bill Trout, who's going to be one of the pinners. And one of our retired firefighters, Scott Gray, is going to be the Assistant. So... Doug's a 28-year veteran of the Fire Department. Doug's been to the National Fire Academy once. He's been to the National Training Center in Colorado twice. He's been to the Anniston, Alabama for hazmat. And he's also went to Socorro, New Mexico for a bomb class. So Doug's been all around the country with training. I'm very happy that Doug's in this position. 28 years of service, and he's going to be pinned by his wife Dana.
Let's all give them a round of applause for their... It wouldn't be appropriate to make a few comments, too. I know, Bill, you were a 37-year fireman, and we appreciate the service to the city, and enjoyed having a chance to meet your family at the retirement party at the station. So, thanks for what you did, for the city.
Thank you. One more thing I need to say is thanks for allowing us to do this at a council meeting because, like I said, these guys work their tails off to get where they're at, and we can be, we can honor them by being at a council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. We're very proud of all of them. Okay, item two, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Andy and talk about the website recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers should have in front of them the cost comparison that has price points between Neapolitan Labs and Hill Productions. If you may recall from the presentations we had previously, another entity that submitted a proposal was Civic Plus. We've decided, quite frankly, to not pursue them at this point due to cost factors. The price points are listed in front of you, and then down below, there is a notation regarding the visually impaired. Councilwoman Berg asked about this. This was an item that we added, and I think it goes without saying that a lot of the credit goes, for putting these together, goes to Edward Wilson, our IT person. As is indicated on the agenda, it lists a recommendation. So what I would do, all items being equal then, would be to bring an ordinance resolution to the next meeting on the 20th for formal approval. At this point, staff is recommending, and I'm recommending more specifically, that the city engage in a contract for services with Hill Productions. One of the items I would like to point out, this came from the meetings that we had, not only with council, but in addition to that, this was an item that we shared with staff, with city staff, and the majority of the staff members that have spoken with me anyway have indicated that they liked the Hill Production site a little bit better than they did Neapolitan Labs. Edward Wilson, as I just stated, Mayor, is with us tonight. If council has any questions, he'll be more than happy to attempt to answer those. But I just want to be clear, in the meeting on the 20th, I am going to ask that council bring, put together an ordinance for a formalization for a contract for services with Hill Productions.
Okay. Are there any questions you want to bring to Ed's attention at this point?
Let's see what...
Well, I think you all have information and material that was handed out by the different organizations. So if you do, please talk to Andy or Ed, and we'll be prepared to vote on that on the 20th then, so...
I will. Mayor, I think the next one, you'll handle this one on Bridgeview.
Well, I think, good news is we did get a response to our RFP, and it's very favorable. And so at this point, Kevin, do you want to make any comments about it, since you were intimately involved in the design of the RFP?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. We had initially sent out our RFP some time ago, and we had trouble gaining response to that. But we went back out, we contracted with HMI to do a hotel feasibility study. We do have that back, as the Mayor said, and it is very favorable. I would recommend that everybody take a read of that. There's a tremendous amount of information in there, of course, about the hospitality industry. But there's also some summary information in there of an economic development nature about the city generally, about our economic development atmosphere, and some other things about the city that's very interesting. So I would recommend reading that. What we'll do is we'll go out, we should finish putting together the package with the RFP for putting it back out with that feasibility study. By Friday, we'll put that out officially from Monday, the 12th to April 13th, Friday 4:30, business closing time in City Hall. As the Mayor mentioned, we do have some concrete interest that's been expressed by at least one developer, verbally, interest from another developer as well. We will be sending the RFP directly to those folks. And who knows, we may have a couple of other responses to that as well over that month-long period. So it's looking good for us right now, but I would entertain any questions that anyone might have.
Any questions? Be sure to read the material that's available to you.
Yeah, excellent read.
Have we received that? I don't think I...
Yes, we got a copy of it this evening. So I'll be, Andy may, I think Andy was copied on that email and has a copy, but if not, I'll make sure that he was. If not, we'll get that email out so everybody has a copy.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Kevin. Why don't you just stay there and talk about the Vogel Urban Renewal Area?
Yes, the Vogel Urban Renewal Area. We had a consultation meeting on the 5th yesterday, and that consultation meeting with the school system and the county went very well. The county expressed some concerns about our map and what were the inclusions of the right-of-ways within that map. Those were acknowledged and understandable. We had some further discussion about what the project was, the scope of the project, and it was very productive. And so everyone seems to be unanimously in support of our project here as a community good and economic development project of great benefit to us, addressing what are many concerns, not the least, of course, our housing shortage. And so we also had a planning meeting last night, and unanimously, the URA was approved by our planning commission, along with our new conceptual plan for the project, which, of course, everyone has seen prior, I think maybe two months ago. Blackberg were here presenting that to us. So we went through all those ins and outs, the acceptance of the park as well, which will be a dedication that will happen, that council will accept at the end of the process, of course, after completion. And so it was a very productive night, and we'll be bringing all those items in a particular order to council at our March 20th meeting. Of course, we'll have to approve our URA to begin with, and then we'll be looking at an approval of what is the conceptual plan for the development. And then after that, of course, we'll be looking at what is now a finished development agreement this evening. We received notice from our attorneys, and got a copy of that, and that'll be available here in City Hall. And everything looks good and full speed ahead, so very good stuff.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Kevin. Unless there are some questions, we'll look forward to getting that packet of material from you.
Thank you.
Andy, I think we'll turn it back to you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. One last item you will note, as I've indicated a couple of months ago, actually, a couple of years ago, when I came on board, giving council an advance notice of items I would be bringing to you at the following meeting. At the meeting on the 20th, you have a sample of that in front of you right now, a document which places water pollution control under the Department of Public Works. At present, that exists as a separate department, a separate entity, although it works very closely with water pollution control. But I'm going to make the recommendation tonight, and all items being equal, we'll bring forth an ordinance on the 20th that memorializes placing water pollution control under the Department of Public Works. Should you have any questions or comments now or between then, please let me know.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Item A on our agenda is the identification of anybody that wants to talk about something that's on the agenda. Is there anyone that didn't get a chance to express themselves? All right, we'll move on to item F.
Award the contract for the 2018 RFP number two, Glenwood Manhole, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. Recommendation: Award the contract to Davis County Excavation in the amount of $10,390, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Good evening, Larry. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This project consists of installing two manholes and reshaping the drainage ditch, thus removing flow from the sanitary collection system in the 900 block of Glenwood Avenue. Bids were received and opened by the city of Atumwa on February 21st, 2018, at 2:00 PM. Five sets of plans were distributed, and four bids were received. The low bidder is Davis County Excavation of Drakesville, Iowa, in the amount of $10,390. The contractor list is attached.
Any questions for Larry on this project? Okay, take the role.
Councilmember Berg.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Award the contracts for the 2018 RFP number three, Forest Avenue Culvert Cleaning, and the 2018 RFP number four, Harrah's Branch Culvert Cleaning, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contracts. Recommendation: Award the contracts to Davis County Excavation totaling the amount of $8,750, and authorize the mayor to sign the contracts.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Larry.
These projects consist of removing any debris, including but not limited to tree branches, rocks, sediment in the bottom of the structures, and cleaning the ditch approximately 50 feet in both directions of the outlets, of the inlets of these reinforced concrete box culverts. This will restore the flow volume and help prevent upstream flooding during heavy rain events. Bids received and opened by the city of Atumwa on February 21st, 2018, at 2:00 PM. Again, five sets of plans were distributed, and four bids were received to the low bidder for both contracts, with Davis County Excavation of Drakesville, Iowa.
Any questions for Larry?
I have one, Your Honor.
Go ahead, Skip.
On the Harrah's Branch ditch, does the Public Works Department still clean that sediment basin that was built into that ditch?
They do.
They do?
The upstream of the railroad track. We still catch that, but it seems like, depending on the rain events, it can fill up and deposit, of course, in the box culverts.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Take the role.
Councilmember Berg.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Approve a two-year lease agreement with Heartland Humane Society to provide animal care services for the stray dogs and cats the city's police department picks up, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. Recommendation: Approve a two-year agreement between the parties effective March 18th, 2018, through March 17th, 2020, and authorize the mayor to sign said agreement.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Jody, are you taking this?
I am, Your Honor. This is a two-year agreement between the city and Heartland Humane Society to provide animal care services for the stray dogs and cats that are picked up by the city's police department. The city and Heartland have been cooperating together for the past six months to work through any potential problems, and the trial period has been working well. The city will continue to work with Pipestone Veterinary Services for the care of those animals which are injured, deemed aggressive, or designated as dangerous under the city code. The fees are set out in the agreement. The owner claiming the animal would pay those fees directly to Heartland. If no owner claims the animal during the impoundment period, the animal would then be released to Heartland with no fees paid by the city for animal care services. This agreement would benefit the city as well as Heartland, which would no longer be required to pay fees to the city to take control of an animal, which they had been previously doing. I think it's a win-win for both Heartland. We, it's been a long time coming. We have a couple of members of Heartland here representing that organization, and I'm just excited that we're able to work with them and have this kind of agreement.
Are there any questions for Jody? Pretty straightforward. You had the information in your packet. Okay, if there's no questions, we'll take the role.
Councilmember Berg.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the proposed adoption of the 2019 city budget. I receive no objections on this item.
Okay. Is there... Go ahead, Bob. You have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. The proposed city tax levy for the budget is increasing 50 cents per 1,000 taxable valuation. And that levy is being, the levy that's actually increasing is the trust and agency levy by 50 cents. The taxable valuation that we received this year decreased $47,650,080 from the previous year. City property taxes consist of approximately 47% of the total property taxes paid by the city residents.
This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience that wants to comment about the budget, now's the time to do so. Did you have any calls or any objections, Bob?
No, none whatsoever. I want to remind council that we'll be coming back in July, once we get the projects and sewer fund analyzed completely, and pull those projects off that are not, aren't needed to be completed this year. So we'll pull them off the budget in July.
Okay, at this point, if there's no formal objection, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Berg.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Resolution number 43, 2018, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution number 43, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Give that to Victor. Okay, thank you. Any questions for Bob? Any other comments?
I'd just like to thank Bob again for the end of fatigual efforts that he put forth in reducing this number by 75%. I think it's important for people to know that this was a much larger number, and without Bob's efforts, it wouldn't have been able to be reduced down to this. So thanks, Bob.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other comments, we'll take the role.
Councilmember Berg.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. And thanks, Kristy, too, for the hard work she puts into this.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the 2018 Atumwa Transit funding. I receive no objections on this item.
Good evening, David. You have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This is my annual consolidated funding application. This is where I get, other than the city money, the majority of my funding from the feds and from the state. The FTA gives me $350,122. The state gives me $196,176. These two numbers are still draft copies. And for capital assistance, $331,290. That is for possible vehicle purchases. I have no idea if I'll get funded, but every year that I have them listed for requests, I have to have the money available in case it happens, so...
This, too, is a public hearing. If there's anyone that wants to comment on this item, now's your time to step forward. Seeing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Berg.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Resolution number 55, 2018, authorizing the mayor to sign the Department of Transportation resolution allowing Atumwa Transit to receive state funding. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution number 55, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions for David? Hearing none, take the role.
Councilmember Berg.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the intent to dispose of city-owned property located at 1346 North Elm. I receive no objections on this item.
Okay. Good evening again. Jody?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you recall, this is the one that you dealt with on the Board of Health agenda, where you rescinded the condemnation. And city advertised this property for sale, and sealed bids for the renovation or the And city advertised this property for sale, and sealed bids for the renovation or the demolition of the property were accepted until 2:00 p.m. February 27. We received three bids, and the best bid was from Oswaldo Sierra in the amount of $6,000, and he intends to rehabilitate the property. And we've attached the bid tab for you.
This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone that wants to address this item, now's the time to step up. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Holly?
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Resolution number 59, 2018, accepting the bid and approving the sale of city-owned property located at 1346 North Elm to Oswaldo Sierra for the sum of $6,000. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution number 59, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Holly. Any questions for Jody?
Is there a deadline on this, Jody?
As far as getting it repaired?
Completion, repair, or starting date?
He will... He'll be required to submit a repair plan, and we'll start with six months. And that will happen as soon as he owns the property. He'll submit a repair plan. And then staff can authorize an additional six months if he makes progress on his original repair plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good question, Skip. Any other questions? Okay, take the roll.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Osage-Oak Meadow Intersection Project. I receive no objections on this item.
Good evening again, Larry. Go ahead.
This project will consist of reconstructing 430 square yards of 8-inch PCC pavement at the intersection of Osage Drive and Oak Meadow Drive. The project includes subdrains, 12 inches of subgrade preparation, geogrid, and 6 inches of modified subbase. Ancillary work includes removal, excavation of driveways, manhole adjustment, erosion control, and site restoration. Bids will be received and opened by the City of Atumwa on March 28, 2018, at 2:00 p.m. The bid report and bid award recommendation will be presented to the city council on April 3, 2018, or later date is determined by staff. The engineer's estimate is $40,460.
This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone that wants to address this item, now's the time to step up. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Resolution number 65, 2018, approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Osage-Oak Meadow Intersection Project. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution number 65, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Holly. Any questions for Larry? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the HMA PCC Street Crack Repair Program 2018. I receive no objections on this item.
Go ahead, Larry.
This is one of our annual preventive maintenance programs where we go through and we select streets, either HMA or PCC, and reseal the joints. This is necessary to extend the life of those pavements, if it's a mat or PCC pavement, to try to get to our design life. We've listed all the streets that we propose to do. Bids will be received and opened by the City of Atumwa on March 28, 2018, at 2:00 p.m. The bid report and bid award recommendation will be presented at the city council meeting on April 3, 2018, or later date is determined by staff. Again, this is from our extended... Expanded Street Repair Program and is budgeted at $50,000 each year.
Okay, this is also a public hearing, so if there's anybody that wants to address this item... Seeing none, let's have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Resolution number 66, 2018, approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the HMA PCC Street Crack Repair Program 2018. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution number 66, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions for Larry?
Just a quick one, Larry. That's quite a few streets, and I trust your estimation. I just wondered, do you just factor equally by the number of streets and about how much it's going to take for each of them, or do they each have their own challenges that might be a little bit different, more or less?
Well, we try to... When we drive them, we estimate how many lateral and longitudinal cracks they have so we can come up with approximate linear foot that we think is on there. And then the way it works, whichever contract is successful, we actually measure what is done in the field. If we get to the end of a given street, we know we're approaching 46,000 to 47, then we'll shut that project off for that year, but we will try to finish that block. Sometimes we run slightly over to finish the street. That's just our target of 50,000.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Resolution number 45, 2018, approving policy number 64, pre-employment reimbursement contracts for police officers. Authorize the police chief and human resources director to execute pre-employment contracts on behalf of the City of Atumwa and to ratify existing contracts. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution number 45, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Chief. You have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The intent of the officer training reimbursement agreement is to provide for the training of an employee as a police officer for the City of Atumwa and to specify the consideration that the employee provides the city in return for the training. In consideration for the expenditures incurred by the city to train the employee as a police officer, the employee expressly agrees to serve as a full-time police officer for the city for at least four years from the date upon which the employee graduates from the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy.
Any questions for the chief? This is the document that was talked about at the last meeting, and it was in your packet. Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chief?
Resolution number 56, 2018, approving purchase of computer equipment from X-Spike Technologies for $13,089. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution number 56, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Go ahead.
The recommendation is presented.
Second.
Thank you. Good evening, Edward. You have the floor.
So this will allow us to finish out the three-phase project we started back in 2015, basically purchasing new infrastructure servers. And then this phase is our backup solution. So this includes our backup server, the backup software, and tape library and all that's necessary for that.
Any questions for Edward? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Resolution number 57, 2018, approving purchase of computer equipment from X-Spike Technologies for $26,860. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution number 57, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Skip. Go ahead, Edward.
In this project, we're looking at replacing a couple of our video storage servers. One of them happens to do our downtown camera system, and the other one basically stores squad car and interview room video.
And these were all covered in our CIP budget.
We were able to get that squeezed into the remainder of our 2015 CIP and then additional monies from our 2017 CIP.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Thank you, Edward.
Resolution number 60, 2018, fixing date for a meeting on the proposition of the issuance of not-to-exceed $350,000 general obligation bonds of the City of Atumwa, State of Iowa, for essential corporate purposes and providing for publication of notice thereof. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution number 60, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just want to... I'll digress a little bit with my staff and how much I appreciate what they do. Edward with the technology stuff, and Kristy and Julie and Mary and Sue with the finance side of it, they make my job a lot easier. We're doing... The next three staff summaries are in relation to the $1.5 million that we're wanting to be issuing in debt in April. $700,000 of that we've already approved with the original beach, $2.8 million approval. So we've got this broken out into three different sections. The first section here for H4 is for... We're going to bond $300,000 for this, but we always add a little bit more into it in case something comes up that we may need as far as covering costs and things. So this is where the extra $50,000 in here is for that, but we won't be bonding for that, but we always want to add a little bit higher cap on it than what we're asking. So this is a public hearing that's required prior to the issuance of general obligation debt. This debt will be used to pay for demolition of houses in the city. The date for the public hearing will be March 20, 2018. This issue will be considered a taxable issue because of the fact that, once these properties are cleared, we don't know if they're going to go to... If they'll be sold, we retain them, whatever. So we've got to err on the side of caution as far as... So that the bond proceeds don't privately benefit individuals. The tax exempt ones can't. So being a taxable entity or a taxable bond, we're covered with that, so.
Any questions for Bob? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Resolution number 61, 2018, fixing date for a meeting on the proposition of the issuance of not-to-exceed $200,000 general obligation bonds of the City of Atumwa, State of Iowa, for general corporate purposes and providing for publication of notice thereof. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution number 61, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is for a $200,000 issue for general corporate purposes, and it'll be used to pay for computers for the finance department if we choose to get that done. Time clock upgrade, phone system upgrade, and the golf course bridge that we originally bonded for, but the bids came in much higher than what we originally bonded for.
Did I hear you correctly? Phone system?
Yes, yes, sir.
I am so happy to hear that.
We will be getting that done sometime soon.
Any questions for Bob?
Everybody likes, but...
No questions, take the roll.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Resolution number 62, 2018, fixing date for a meeting on the proposition of the issuance of not-to-exceed $300,000 general obligation bonds of the City of Atumwa, State of Iowa, for essential corporate urban renewal purposes and providing for publication of notice thereof. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution number 62, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Holly. Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Your Honor. This third and final one is for the airport runway extension, taking care of some of the expenses that will be incurred prior to the actual... The big groundbreaking, so some of the engineering costs and things like that. The previous two and the one that was approved for the beach will be paid from debt service levy when it occurs. This will be paid... Repaid back using the airport TIF funds.
And am I correct, Bob, that some of the expenses of the airport runway will be reimbursed after the project is completed?
Correct, correct.
Again, 9010 from the federal aviation.
Correct. It's, I think, an 11 to $13 million project, so we'll float it and then get reimbursed. And they're real good about reimbursing us on a consistent basis, so.
Any other questions for Bob? Take the roll.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Resolution number 63, 2018, awarding the contract for the Catch Basin Replacement Program 2018. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution number 63, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Skip. Go ahead, Larry.
This is our annual Catch Basin project, and we will reconstruct and raise Catch Basin wells with new grates as indicated on the plans and specifications. Basins are located on various streets within the City of Atumwa. Bids will be received and opened by the City of Atumwa on February 28, 2018, at 2:00 p.m. Five sets of plans were distributed, and three bids were received. The low bidder is Davis County Escavation of Drakeville, Iowa, in the amount of $54,229.88.
Any questions for Larry?
What does that figure per basin?
The one type, 501, would be $1,934. The 503 would be $2905, and the 505 is $2730.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Take the roll.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Resolution number 64, 2018, awarding the contract for the Asphalt Street Repair Program 2018. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution number 64, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Go ahead, Larry.
This project is for our annual asphalt street repair program, which started in 2003 and is used to set unit price cost. The work will consist of overlays on various streets in the city. Staff has reviewed the sewer condition and ADA requirements of each of the streets listed below. Bids were received and opened by the City of Atumwa on February 28, 2018, at 2:00 p.m. One bid was received. The low bidder is Norris Asphalt Paving Company of Atumwa, Iowa, in the amount of This includes the base bid total of $1,09,842, and an alternate bid item of $79,672.85. We've listed which streets are scheduled. And again, everybody needs to keep in mind that this is a unit price contract where we set multiple ranges of asphalt tonnage, and then the contractor bids those at a certain price based on the number of tons. And then again, we've listed which streets and how the money is broke out. We are targeting about $485,546 worth of asphalt streets this year.
Lot of money for streets. Any questions for Larry? Okay, take the roll.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Resolution number 67, 2018, approving policy number 65, pre-employment reimbursement contracts for firefighters, and authorize the fire chief and human resources director to execute pre-employment contracts on behalf of the City of Atumwa. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution number 67, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Holly. Good evening, Chief. You have the floor.
Thank you. We've got a situation where, you know, we've hired people, and they've not stayed with us very long. I've talked to Joni many times about this situation, how we rectify it. I've talked to other departments around the state to see what they do. We'd be one of the very first departments in the state that, if you don't stay here after we do, you know, pay our costs, it's pretty expensive to hire a guy. But you have physicals, turnout gear, training. It gets a little pricey. So this is one way we can fix that. If you don't stay for four years, a minimum of four years, that you're going to have to repay some of these costs back. This isn't a penalty. It's just us trying to recoup our costs.
Any questions for the chief? Any questions for the Chief? Okay. Take the roll.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Ordinance number 3139, 2018, amending Chapter 7 entitled Animals and Fowl by deleting Section 7.8 and inserting a new Section 7.8 of the Municipal Code of the City of Etumwa, Iowa. Recommendation A, pass the first consideration of ordinance number 3139, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Joni, are you?
I'm doing. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this, the topic we discussed previously, a lot of credit on this goes to City Attorney Joni Keith in putting the document together. As you will note from the, the very beginning, this amends the sections, deletes Section 7.8 and inserts 7.8, a new section in the municipal code relative to the ordinance that speaks to animals and fowl. You may recall discussions we've had on the staff level, which I shared with council, and that is the process for picking up dead animals. What this ordinance does, if approved by council, would designate certain departments, it's listed in the discussion section below, to pick up dead animals, as we have discussed on previous occasions. There is one, one item, though, that, that is listed in here, and the, the city attorney has assured me that this, this can still remain, but if you look at the departments, there are actually, there are six departments that we've identified that would be, let's just say, specifically charged with the task of picking up dead animals, and that is Parks Recreation, Water Pollution Control, Police, Public Works, Health and Inspections, and Code Enforcement. The Fire Department is, is listed, that actually would not be one of the departments that would be specifically instructed to pick up these dead animals. I have a, an internal memo that I shared with staff yesterday. If council would like a copy of this, I'll be hap, this one is marked up a little bit, I'll be more than happy to provide you with the internal memo that I put together and shared with staff. One item I, I would like to point out, which I, I think is a pretty good textbook example of how this situation works. Two weeks ago, Katie, being my administrative assistant, received a phone call from Dave Silverio at Water, at Transit, and said he saw a dead animal in a particular location, called Katie as he is supposed to do, and I, I give Katie about a 24-hour turnaround period to instruct the department to pick up this dead animal. She, in that point, called Public Works, and then Steve Edgington and his folks made sure that was picked up. Had, had Public Works not been able to pick up that dead animal, then I would get on the phone and start assigning this task to another department. That may seem a little bit anal, but I think all three parties in that handle that in a fashion that it's exactly supposed to be in, in addressing this problem. I don't have anything else, Mr. Mayor, unless Ms. Keith has anything to add to the description that I've given, but it's something certainly staff supports.
Okay. Okay, so the vote is on passing the first consideration of this ordinance. Any questions? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Recommendation B, waive the second and third considerations, pass and adopt ordinance number 3139, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Skip. Any discussion, any questions or comments? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to item K. Is there, we have one party that wants to address the council? Is there anyone else in the audience? Let's go ahead and let Rogers, since he signed up first, and then we'll have Connie come up. Roger Hornback?
Hello, my name's Roger Hornback from 511 Maruz, Etumwa. I'm here to address the council to see if we'd be reconsidered adopting the Iowa Code 455(c) into the bylaws of the City of Etumwa to start enforcing the redemption law since the county attorney won't do it. We had a vote one night, but they, the city attorney decided we couldn't do it that night, and I'd like to know why, or see if we could proceed, if not tonight, another night, to adopt this into the bylaws.
Well, I think at this point, I would refer to City Attorney Joni Keith and ask her to research the situation and give the council some direction, so that we could either answer his question or take a stance next council meeting. Is that reasonable? Okay. We will address it for sure next time.
All right.
Thank you, Roger. Connie Hammersley-Wilson?
Good evening. I just want to update you on a few things the chamber has going on in the upcoming months. Women Wine and Whiskey will be coming up May 4. It is a professional development day at Bridgeview Center, and so we really encourage our women leaders to come and join us for that day as well, and you can get online on the chamber website, or call Brenda. Last night, I was at a meeting, and the Johnson County Auditor gave a presentation. He had a video there about, that their local public television station had done a very good job of putting together, about how voter registration now works with the new laws. I really feel like it would be a really beneficial and educational part to put on our GoTV site, so I would like to consider your consideration of having this video, and I did ask the auditor